Mayor Solento.
Present.
Council President Sigmund.
Here.
Mrs. Albertson.
Here.
Mrs. Lance. Noted absent. Mrs. Rios.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Uh, Councilman Vandermark, you have to unmute yourself.
Hello?
He's present.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, item number three on the agenda is proclamations. Uh, we have a proclamation celebrating Juneteenth. We have Mr. Best, uh, Denellen High School School District Guidance Counselor this evening who will present the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation celebrating Juneteenth. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January first eighteen sixty-three, declaring that those kept as enslaved persons in Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed some two and one-half years to June nineteenth eighteen sixty-five in reaching authorities and African-Americans in the South and southwestern United States. And whereas Emancipation Day observations are held on different days in different states in the South and Southwest and in other parts of the nation. And whereas June nineteenth has a special meaning to those who wish to commemorate this day and is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and nineteenth and has been celebrated by some in the African-American community for over one hundred and fifty years. And whereas Mayor Jason F. Solento and the Borough Council of the and the and the Borough Council of the Borough of Denellen, New Jersey have unanimously recognized Juneteenth as a borough holiday. Now, therefore, Jason F. Solento, Mayor of Denel- uh, Mayor of the Borough of Denellen, New Jersey, with support from the Denellen Borough Council, do hereby declare June nineteenth twenty twenty-five as Juneteenth in the Borough of Denellen, New Jersey, and encourage all citizens and businesses to celebrate the importance of this holiday to commemorate and corroborate that all men are truly created equal.
Thank you, Mr. Best.
Absolutely.
Thank you for what you do in our school district for these. Thank you for all of your work.
Oh, I'm taking pictures.
Just broke the news for you. Good, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Is your family here today?
Yes, absolutely. So we have our lovely, our actually first husband, oh my, um, so we have my three children. So we have sophomore here and two middle schoolers. They're actually twins. So as soon as we leave here, they're gonna go in a car anytime now. That's what they're gonna do.
There it is. Thank you for being here. Thank you for joining your father. We're happy that you shared the heart with us. Okay. Item number four on our agenda is the, uh, meeting minutes of our June second council meeting. Can I have a motion and second, please?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Are there any comments, additions or redactions as the meeting minutes currently stand? Without hearing any, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Item number five on our agenda is the adoption of ordinances. Tonight we have twenty twenty-five dash twelve. An ordinance to add new chapter thirty-nine municipal flag lowering policy to part one administrative legislation of the borough code. So for those who are new in the audience this evening, what we'll do is we'll open up the floor to the public for any comments or questions. And then after that discussion, we'll open the floor to mayor and council before considering any adoption of the ordinance. So with that, we'll open the floor to the public. We ask that you please state your name and address. And we're only addressing twenty twenty-five dash twelve at this moment, which is ordinance as noted about when we should lower our flag because there was not a policy prior to this introduction. Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Thank you. Now we'll open up to the public. I apologize. Without hearing any, we'll close that portion. We'll open the floor to mayor and council for discussion. You're good with the amendments that you recommended last time?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm good with those, thank you. And Alex.
Okay, without hearing further discussion, we'll take a roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Item number six on the agenda is resolutions. This evening, we have resolutions two thirty-eight through two fifty, and, uh, Mrs. Stats, if you can read through them and then give us an opportunity to discuss them, uh, if council so chooses.
Resolution number two thirty-eight is to pay the bills.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution number two thirty-nine is to appoint Michael Schmidt as an associate member to the Denellen Fire Company.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
I'll just note to Mr. Schmidt and all our volunteer fire members, thank you for your service. The Fire Department and Rescue Squad and all our committees and commissions are looking for more volunteers if people would kindly step up to the plate and sign up to volunteer. So, Mr. Schmidt, thank you for stepping up to the plate and volunteering. So I just wanted to make that note.
Okay, I'll take a roll. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Abstained to my position.
Mr. Scott?
Staying in position in the Fire Department.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution number two forty is authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for legal services.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Did you need to address this?
This is the, uh, resolution authorizing the firm that's currently representing the borough uh, through the no-sit championship to continue the representation on behalf of the borough.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution two forty-one is to amend resolution from June second twenty twenty-five, number two twenty-nine, approving twenty twenty-five salaries.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution two forty-two is to award a contract to CME for additional engineering services for the project of Washington Avenue Beautification.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund. Council, uh, will remember this is also, this is part of the, as it notes in the resolution, the Washington Avenue Beautification Project, which is the NJDOT Transit Village Grant. We got a few years back, what was it, two hundred and twenty-six thousand to do the decorative lighting that you see in the downtown between Washington up to the train bridge and then, um, Denellen Avenue to First Street in front of the church and, uh, Washington Park. So this is continuing those services.
All right, I'll take a roll. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution two forty-three is to authorize professional services for general engineering to CME associates for the preparation of the twenty twenty-six state aid grant applications.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
This will be, as we apply every single year, um, the approval for, uh, CME associates to apply for the grants, which we'll go over in our reports this evening before we finalize improvement at a later council meeting. Um, but this is just giving them the approval to start the process of, uh, applying for additional grants.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution two forty-four is to authorize CME associates to prepare engineering services for the Tier A Municipal Stormwater General Permit.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Alex, do you want to address this one?
Yes, Mayor. So, um, over the last couple of years, all the meetings out in response to it, it's one word, it's not this is not wrapping up the last part of it, that is, they might need to share. So it's, uh, you can take that off the show and work with, uh, flow and, uh, what with different, uh, systems that we got.
Okay, I'll take a roll. Does anyone have any questions? No, I don't have any questions.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution two forty-five is to award a contract to Wireless Communications and Electronics for the purchase of dual-band voice pagers for the Denellen Fire Department and Office of Emergency Management.
Move it, Albertson.
Second, Sigmund.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Abstained.
Mr. Scott?
Abstained.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution two forty-six is to authorize a refund performance guarantee to K. Huff Nadian Denellen Urban Renewal LLC for one hundred South Washington Avenue.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution two forty-seven is to authorize a summer schedule for payment of bills and claims.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution two forty-eight is to approve a schedule of school levy payments.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
See, what are those levy payments? Total of seven million, over seven million dollars, just so the public is aware of what we levy for the school district. When you pay your taxes, seven million of that is going to the school district.
And that's for July to December.
Okay. So sixty-two percent of your property tax bill.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution two forty-nine is authorizing the mayor to execute a Treatment Works Approval Permit application for the project known as four oh five to four fifteen North Avenue Urban Renewal, block sixty-six, lots twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution number two fifty is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a Treatment Works Approval Permit application for the project known as four thirty-one to four forty-one North Avenue, block sixty-six, lot sixteen, seventeen, and seventeen point oh one.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Item number seven on the agenda is our consent agenda, and we have items, uh, resolutions two fifty-one through two fifty-nine. I'm gonna ask council to review, if they have not already, the resolutions before we take a, a general vote, uh, motion second on the consent agenda. If there's any items you wish to pull out before we, uh, consider approving or denying any of them.
Can we pull two fifty-two, please?
Which one?
Two fifty-two.
Two fifty-two. Sure.
Thanks, the two fifty-two is pulled. Any additional ones before I ask for motion and second on all of them with the exception of two fifty-two? Okay, can I have a motion and second on resolutions on the consent agenda, two fifty-one through two fifty-nine with the exception of two fifty-two? Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance? Oh, sorry. Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Okay, uh, can we have a motion second on two fifty-two so we can enter into a discussion on it?
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
It says it's a mobile food vendor. Where will this mobile food vendor be?
Oh, so it's the ice cream truck that drives around.
Oh, okay.
Yep. They just get us, they're separate in the ordinance.
Okey-dokey.
That's it.
I mean, I can't say no to that, right?
Yep, it's the same gentleman that applies every year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions to two fifty-two? Without hearing any, can we have a, uh, roll call?
Sure. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Okay. Next up is item number eight, council reports. Councilwoman Albertson?
Short and sweet. Congratulations to all graduates of Denellen High School. I hope tomorrow is a beautiful day and everything goes well for you. Best of luck in your future. Best wishes to the middle schoolers who are now leaving middle school and moving on to high school and to the elementary student, fifth graders who will be coming over to Lincoln Middle. Congratulations to all of you and best wishes. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rios?
Yes. Uh, Buildings and Grounds Report. Public Works is coordinating with the Denellen High School Field Maintenance Department to prepare Washington Memorial Park for the high school graduation ceremony. Public Works Department has completed paving the walkway at the senior center. The construction office has been relocated to the multipurpose office on the second floor of Borough Hall. The final steps in this move will be transitioning the OEM into the former construction office. Homer, you getting the new homes? Parsa Report. Parsa was on-site for a sewer main repair on Grove Street behind the Colombian Club. The repairs were, the repair was completed by CRJ, a contractor with NJ American Water. Denellen Public Library. Art After School continues every Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday at three thirty P M. Juneteenth closure. The library will be closed on Wednesday, June nineteenth in observance of Juneteenth, juggling a and storytime workshop. Join us Tuesday, June twenty-fourth at six P M. for fun and interactive workshop with Lou DeLoro. This event is intended for adults. Children aged ten and up may attend with a parent or guardian. Please call or visit the library to register. Home seller workshop on Wednesday, June twenty-fifth at five thirty. Rebecca Stark Dandrono will host a workshop offering tips for those interested in selling their home. Registration is available by phone or in person. And summer reading program, our program is underway and runs through Friday, August twenty-ninth. Children can sign up at the library for a chance to win prizes. The summer schedule is now posted on our website and social media. Pre-registration is open to participants only. Don't miss out. And of course, congratulations to the class of twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. They're gonna be doing a workshop on purchasing homes, not encouraging people to sell? Okay. Next, Councilman Scott.
For DPW, they routinely clean the downtown and all the borough parks and properties. Weekly lawn and landscape maintenance at the borough parks and properties, maintain the ball fields. Assisted in construction office moved to the Borough Hall. Or worked on the mural installations, did a sweepings run. Uh, multiple plants were replaced in the planter at Columbia Park near the Columbia Street entrance. And they paved the walkway to the senior center as previously reported. In the mechanics division, they service the police fleet vehicles as they come due for maintenance or breakdowns. They service the DPW fleet as they're due for maintenance or breakdowns. They do the service all the lawn equipment for continued operation through the season. Repaired multiple drivability issues with patrol car five oh six, diagnosed a bad transmission control module, repaired and reprogrammed the T C N. Di- diagnosed the lack of air conditioning in the senior bus, and they set up an account for purchasing repair parts for the bus. And they diagnosed an AC faulty AC system in the street sweeper. Set P M. Service for the snorkel and repair parts and previously done through Northeast Sweeper. And that's the DPW report.
Okay, thank you, Council. Speaking of planters, um, some of the other planters in Columbia Park need to be kind of fixed. I noticed on my walk and talk with the mayor, when I was walking by myself, um, good. And then if maybe the summer camp could think about as a project, maybe putting new flowers in them because they're kind of, uh, erring, just a thought. Thanks. I have a few of those once in a while. Council President Sigmund.
Uh, yes, the Mayor's Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Task Force wrapped up its second annual uh, Walk to School Wednesday Initiative where we had over forty-eight, uh, participants, uh, walk to school numerous times during the run of this program. Uh, and we will be recognizing them and acknowledging them and want to thank Rome Pizza, uh, for providing uh, gift certificates for them to get a free slice and a drink, uh, for participating in the program. And that is all for me.
That's great. Thank you. Um, before I get to my report, I'm happy to be able to welcome back Councilman Hal Vandermark virtually this evening, um, hopefully soon to be in person. For those that don't know, Councilman Vandermark, um, had some personal matters that if he wishes to discuss, he can discuss, but, um, we're very happy that he's alive and well and he's with us. And Councilman, it's my privilege to yield the floor to you and welcome you back. And if you have anything to report on this evening.
Um, I have nothing to report on, but, um, thank you, Mayor, and, uh, yes, um, I recently in March underwent a, uh, heart and kidney transplant. Everything's doing well. I'm under recovery and should be back hopefully next month.
Oh, wonderful.
Or that, or the month after. But my, uh, recovery is going well and should be around soon.
Well, we're happy to hear about that, Councilman, and God bless you. We'll continue to pray for you and your family. And we are looking forward to the day that you can step into the chambers with us and, uh, join us in our council meeting. So God bless you and thank you. We're happy that you're here.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll continue, uh, my report for this evening. Um, just a quick congratulations to the students in Lincoln Middle School and Denellen High School on their graduation. We're wishing you all the best uh, in your future endeavors and, uh, to the high schoolers and of course to the middle schoolers who are transitioning into uh, high school, their, their last four years in our public school system. Um, as we noted earlier in the proclamation, Borough Hall is closed on Thursday for Juneteenth as a reminder. Um, so we will reopen on Friday, June twentieth. And we are currently under summer hours, which goes until one thirty on Fridays. One P M. Oh.
Thirty to.
Eight thirty to one P M. That concludes when? September. Labor Day weekend. Okay, thank you. Uh, Music in the Park, um, if I'm repeating anything, I apologize. Music in the Park series begins this Thursday at seven P M. Funkin' Motown Band Colorblind, uh, will be there. Um, so we're looking forward to having them. Um, in the event of inclement weather, the council will be moved to the following Thursday, June twenty-sixth. And the Music in the Park series will take place every other week until August twenty-first. So please join us. It's always a fun time. Uh, the Madison Avenue mural unveiling is this Saturday, the twenty-first, Bright Day Every Day by Ogilthapia at eleven A M. At the, uh, Madison Avenue Bridge, so join us for that celebration. Um, Fire Department Street Fair Saturday, eleven A M. to five P M. And then, um, CME associates will be providing us a memo too on the twenty fiscal year twenty twenty-six local aid grants, uh, that we apply for every year. I believe over the last five years, we've been able to get upward of close to five or six million dollars for projects around town, maybe a little less than that. The DOTs. Closer to eight, okay. I was being more conservative. Um, first up that CME is recommending in our conversations is the municipal aid program. Um, the recommendation is to pave Second Street from North Washington Ave. to Jefferson Avenue. So between the three phases, which we got grant for phase one, which is currently going on, which is Ma- uh, Madison to the Middlesex border, phase two will be Madison to Washington. And then phase three, if we get the grant, would be Washington to the border of Plainfield, which means we would have the entire street of Second Street paved underneath a grant. So that's, uh, pretty good news if we're able to get the third one. Either way, the first two were grant money. Uh, Safe Streets, the transit program, um, completing the missing segments of sidewalks along New Market is a consideration. Um, so that might be a good one for us to consider. Uh, Transit Village Program, uh, lighting along the first block of side streets along North Avenue or Bound Brook Road. Uh, so along the New Jersey State Highway twenty-eight. So basically, we got a grant to complete the remainder of Route twenty-eight for all the decorative lighting. This would go, if we went this way, would go one block in from the Route twenty-eight corridor, so on Sanford. If I'm doing this right, Madison, Lincoln, Prospect, Jackson. We'll check on Jefferson, if that makes sense. Only go one side and Plainfield side wouldn't have it. Um, so that's one thought. Basically, that's the entire redevelopment area and what is viewed as our whole downtown. Um, and then the other one that we're thinking, uh, is the improvements to parking lot near the train station. So a train station parking lot improvement, probably site engineering for new, for enhanced parking and maybe some sidewalk improvement around there. So Transit Village, we've got two choices, uh, to consider when the time comes. Uh, but CME will, um, certainly be providing a memo for us to consider when that time comes. Uh, the Second Street Phase One NJDOT Project, so that phase one is approximately seventy-five percent complete with concrete work for the curb and gutter and sidewalks. Trees per the contract and requested, uh, trees per the contract and requested by the borough have been removed. Uh, depending on the weather over the next couple of weeks, uh, the contractor may complete the concrete work by June twentieth, fingers crossed. Uh, the remaining items include installing new roadway and pedestrian signage, milling and paving, and final restoration of, uh, properties that were kind of messed up. New Jersey American Water Projects, we got the South Avenue Project. The contractor for NJW is finishing the new water main upgrade from eight-inch to twelve-inch water main on South Avenue between Pulaski and Hall Street. Um, the Whittier Avenue, CRJ is on the last block of Whittier Ave., and water service has been installed in each residential home. Um, Alex Miller addressed a few residential concerns last week with New Jersey American Water and CRJ. Um, just as a reminder, the working hours per ordinance are from seven A M. to five P M. CRG was told that they cannot work after seven P M. unless there's an emergency. Um, well, should be five P M. Not able to work past five P M. unless there's an emergency. And they need approval from the New Jersey American Water and Borough before they do that. Um, we were having issues with that, which we handled. Uh, water flushing after installing new water services. Upon completing the new water services, CRJ must turn on the outside faucet at each home to flush out any air in the water uh, line from new connection. Uh, before the flushing, the contractor is instructed to knock on the residents' doors to inform them of the flushing. If that is not occurring, we need you to uh, call Borough Hall. If Borough Hall is closed, um, there should have been on all the letters the contact information uh, for New Jersey American Water. And if all else fails, you can call the non-emergency line uh, seven three two nine six eight three thousand, extension zero to report it. And then that will get to the appropriate channels that it should get to. Um, two hundred block Penfield Place, uh, which is the two thousand and twenty-four New Jersey American Water Project. Um, American Water has notified the borough that they'll be forming inspections and possible repair work starting Monday, June sixteenth as a precaution due to some recently, recent discoveries of an incorrect sewer lateral repair at uh, eight locations that required excavation and correction. So uh, due to this discovery, the borough has required that the contractors representing New Jersey American Water inspect the immediate area of concern to see if additional work is necessary. Parsar Sewer Utility will be present on behalf of the borough and will be on site to oversee all inspections and any repair work that might be conducted. The work is expected to last for approximately one week, weather pending. The street will be milled and paved appropr- approximately ninety days after the completion of this work. Again, we apologize for any inconvenience and are committed to holding the contractor accountable to ensure they fix this mistake to prevent any potential issues from arising in the future. So um, all projects going on after ninety days upon their completion for the water main and laterals, et cetera. They will be repaved, fully repaved after ninety days. So we'll be getting new roads out of this and some enhanced striping because we have been moving towards uh enhanced striping for traffic calming measures. Um, so, and again, we apologize for the inconvenience for some of this work getting done. But they've knocked on our doors and they want to get, American Water wants to invest all this money. They're not investing in every single town. They're investing in the towns that work with them. So after the shield, they'll, they'll have invested over twenty million dollars in our community in just a five-year period, and that's replacing hundred eighty-year-old pipes and laterals, et cetera. So, um we all understand this is a inconvenience. It's a short-term inconvenience for a long-term gain. So I think we have to just keep focused on that. Again, I apologize on behalf of the borough. Um, but we're working here in partnership with you. So if you see something, say something. We can only do something if you make sure you say something. And we do have our onsite inspectors too, but they don't have eyes all over the place either. So um, it's called community for a reason. It takes a village, okay? So with that, we'll open the floor to, yeah. Yes, and I know there were some questions too. Thank you for bringing that up from the public about why are they doing it during the school year? Why can't they do it later in the year? It's exactly what Mr. Miller just stated. You do it any later in the year, you have to wait the ninety-day periods. Then you're up against the weather for milling and paving, and then you're against the plows, against that not so nicely uh not well paved because it's not paved, it's all patches going up against it. And you really don't want water getting in any crevices. What was that, do you think? Um, so that's why some of the wo- work was done earlier in the year. So before the weather gets cold, the roads can be repaved. Um, so there will be some roads like Walnut, um potentially New Market, although the county's gonna love that they just paved it last year, but that was on their part to coordinate it, not us. Um, so uh, that might get repaved next year just because of the timing. We're gonna push every best effort to get it paved this year, but um, it might be spring when the weather finally breaks. So yeah. Okay, item number ten on the agenda, well, nine, we don't have council discussion. Item number ten is department head report. So legal, anything to report?
No report.
That's always refreshing. Clerk, registrar?
No reports.
How the elections go with everything?
Pretty good. The three voting locations, I think it's separated, like in middle school, we took four and then we separated them. So each polling location has two.
I just want to publicly note, um, Mrs. Stats, you know, was requested earlier this year that we move from Lincoln Middle School uh, due to the concerns from the school district. Mrs. Stats handled that with grace and integrity and professionalism to make sure that we had a fair uh, election process that was secure and seamless, I believe, unless there's concerns that were raised. I'm not aware about um, in terms of making it publicly noticed appropriately and also making sure that from my understanding, went off without a hitch. So congratulations and thank you for your service and getting it done without any big hip-ups. So thank you. Okay. Administration? DPW, nothing? OEM?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that um, when we split our budget, we named like five different um, objectives this year. The objectives were E, OEM, I mean, EOC readiness. As you know, this is hurricane season, so that becomes crucial, okay, in case we have to uh activate our EOC. Um, shelter agreements, we want to solidify our shelter agreements again because you remember our experience with the shelter, okay? So we want to definitely uh uh, solidify our shelter agreement, not only in terms of the school, but possibility in terms of a couple of churches. Uh, reunification is ongoing. For those of you that don't know what reunification is, is basically if we have a active shooter incident, then um, we want to have plans in place to unify, re-unify the parents or guardians with the students. So that's ongoing. Uh, we work closely with the police department. Um, the other one was to increase uh, CERT participation. Um, and that includes uh, maybe coming up with a volunteer shelving uh, shelter staffing uh, component. Um, and then again, we always, always, it's an ongoing process in terms of trying to educate our residents in terms of readiness, preparedness, because they really need, that's part of their whole community um endeavor, okay? So anyway, this behind that, of course, is the details. I would give you one detail. Uh, Chuck Lopez has stepped up to uh, assist Bill Carson as the CERT coordinator. Um, Chuck brings with himself, he's a certified emergency manager. He has a lot of skill sets and he's, he's been working with, with regards to that. In fact, Chuck did a presentation before the uh Denellin PTO. Uh, he started out with the eight possible candidates or people that are interested in, you know, joining uh, or at least going through the educational process of CERT. Ended up with thirty-eight. So hopefully we'll, hopefully we can translate that into a class. Um, also, uh, as you know, CERT, of course, represented, were representing at the volunteer uh, picnic and car show as well as will have a presence during the graduation, helping out with the uh, the crossings. Um, and um I think that's, I think that, oh, yes, with regards to the EOC, uh we have uh, we have examined um, a couple of uh, vendors for relocating the antennas, which are essential to our MRAC radio system. In fact, uh, we were pleasantly surprised that uh, what we thought was be a, a, a cost of like eleven thousand dollars is really like six thousand dollars. So, but that's essential. Uh, so we're really anxious to, we're really anxious to get into that uh, space.
Know you are.
Because it's, I think it's very important and we hopefully keep our fingers crossed. Yeah, I guess. Keep our finger crossed that we uh, we go through this hurricane season without an event.
Your mouth to God's ears, so. Um, uh, Mr. Mosley, question, uh, and I don't need any names of the churches. How has your progress been with some of the churches?
Well, um, I think we want to revisit St. John's, uh, because St. John's, as you know, he came to our rescue. Uh, at, I can't remember.
Aida, yeah.
And also, uh, I want to revisit that with the Living, Living Hope.
Okay.
Okay, so, so that we have a couple of uh, options.
Well, whatever assistance you need from us, just let us know.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Homer, for what you do. Uh, Police Department, Lieutenant, anything? No report? Okay. What's going on, Rescue Squad? And you're still, and you're coordinating with Alex on the temporary move?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Good. It's nice to see your numbers growing. Strong leadership there, my friend. Good work. Keep it going. Okay, no other department heads. So at this point, item number eleven on the agenda is public comments. We'll open the floor to the members of the public. We're pleased that you asked that you step forward, state your name and address, and we're here to listen to your concerns or any other commentary. Yes.
Good evening to all. My name is William Palatin. I live on Denellin Avenue. Um, just uh, have a ongoing safety concern. I just wanted to bring to the borough's attention uh, me and collectively some neighbors in town on the street. Uh, some very near close calls from the stop sign, people just running the stop sign. Uh, just want to know maybe if the town can allocate some funds to possibly put a flashing stop signs on Lincoln and Denellin Avenue.
Okay, Lincoln and Denellin?
Yeah.
Um, we would want to work with the police department to see what their recommendations are.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then go from there, but I don't see any issue with uh, exploring that option.
Yeah, yeah, appreciate that.
Of course.
Appreciate that. That's about it.
That's about it.
It's, it's been ongoing. It just seems to be getting a lot worse.
I understand. I can, I can tell you, we're in the process of a study right, I'm sorry, man, once uh, in a study right now. Um, that making Denellin entirely twenty-five mile per hour community. So there's no question of what street is what. It's all twenty-five mile per hour. Um, we were discussing about possibly rumble strips along Denellin Avenue because we know it's a through street into Plainfield, and I know there's a speed issue there. Um, so we are creatively trying to think of solutions. Um, if you're ever interested, we got the Mayor's Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Task Force if you want to volunteer for, always looking for him.
Appreciate that.
So uh, but uh, we'll work with the police department. We'll get their input. And you know, we do have a few, maybe even if it's, they just start getting circulated and maybe they're there for two weeks and then another spot two weeks because we only have, we have only so many and so many, so much discretionary spending, but we'll look into it for you, okay?
Thanks.
So could you just do me a favor, provide Mr. Miller your contact information so we can follow up with you? And I apologize. Okay. I mean, Lieutenant could probably speak. It's a yeah. So we'll certainly look at that intersection. Um, I don't know if we can have flashing lights at every single intersection, but um, there's definitely crash data we can look into that would support why their key intersections might be the ones we would identify. So that we can, we'll look into it, okay? Nice, nice meeting you. I don't know if I met you before, but nice meeting you this evening. Uh, any other members of the public? Please state your name and address.
Because it's very difficult to get out of Pulaski Street. They're parked on both sides.
Will they be redoing the curbs?
They, yeah, they put in new curbs where they put in the apartments there, right on the bend.
Oh, okay, so no parking type of situation. Okay.
The curves used to be yellow before they started building, and now there's no yellow paint on it, so they park there.
Well, we would have to go back and see what the approvals were with the NJ DOT because it is a state highway and whether they approved it, where it'd be parking now. So we'd have to go back and Yeah, that one would definitely have to have yellow. So we'll look into what that, what the site plan was approved for and what statutory requirements would be in that area, and then we'll work towards getting it striped appropriately. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller's taking notes. I see him. Thanks, Alex. Anybody online that wants to join us, please state your name and address? Okay, I'll do a general blanket one last time. Any other members of the public want to share their concerns and ideas? Please state your name and address. Okay, without hearing any, we will close that portion of the meeting. We do not have an executive session this evening. So item number twelve is adjournment underneath Resolution two sixty. Before we go into that, our next council meeting, as a reminder, is July seventh at seven PM in these chambers. It will be the only council meeting we have that evening. That, I mean, clearly that evening, but that month, I apologize. In August, that's our summer sessions. And uh, you can tell I'm ready for summer sessions. Um, so uh, July seventh at seven PM, and I also believe that's the night that our planners are presenting on the fourth round of affordable housing. So if you want to hear what the state is expecting of us on affordable housing, you're more than welcome to join us and listen to it. Um, so, okay, without, with further ado, Resolution two sixty, can I have a motion, a second to adjourn?
Move it, Segman?
Second, Albertson.
I say no one wants to go home. All in favor?